The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in 30 seconds. If you wish to speak during the public comments, please sign up at the podium in the hallway. The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in 10 seconds.
Good morning and welcome to those of you who are out there in TV land and those of you who are here with us today. We have a full auditorium and we're going to move our event up to the beginning so that we won't be too crowded for too long. We welcome all of you and so glad to see you here. I'll call our meeting to order and we'll have our roll call, Commissioners. Okay, we'll now have our invocation by Mary Perkins-Williams and our pledge by Tom Colson. If you'll please stand.
Dear Lord, on behalf of the citizens, I'd like to thank you for your love. Thank you for your guidance and direction. Bless the members of this board and the officials of this county. Touch the citizen that they may understand what love is. All these things, I pray in your name. Amen.
Please, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like before we approve the agenda to move number nine, the Employee Service Awards up ahead of our public hearings. Okay, so let, all in favor of approving the agenda, let's vote please with the addition or the change. Okay, so that's where we start. Do it. We don't need a resolution or anything, do we?
No. Can I ask Florida Hardy to come up and assist us, please? All right, it's our pleasure this morning to once again recognize our workforce in terms of the tenure that you have with Pitt County Government. This morning, we were very pleased to see we have a room full, standing room only, and it's a pleasure to have you here this morning. We're going to recognize a number of county employees going from the five-year category all the way up to 30 years this morning. And if we can, as I call each category, if we can hold our applause till the end of each category, and afterwards, we will have a reception that the chair will announce. So beginning with five years, if Lisa Admanson will come with animal services, will also be recognized later for another award.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tayanda... Tayanda... Catino, social services. Tayanda Catino.
I guess you better hit it.
Yes. Congratulations. This one's easy. Jan Elliott.
It's easy only because he said it a lot in the past.
Christina Futrell. Taylor Griffin, animal services. Levita Grady, social services. Next one couldn't attend. This is Ginger Hardy with Sheriff's Office. The next we have Elise Lawrence Durham, social services. Elsie, okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thomas Lindsay, MIS, Management Information Systems. Meredith Lovely, Emergency Management.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hunter Nichols, Environmental Health. Jeffrey Masking... Maskingill, Environmental Health. Actually, Hunter Nichols was Sheriff's Department, and then Jeffrey Maskingill is Environmental Health. Tiffany Mitchell, Social Services. Nikki Park, Social Services. Lydia Randolph, Social Services. Amy Rogers, Social Services. Cynthia Shepherd, Tax Administration. Couldn't attend, okay. Jordan Smith, Legal. David Sparks, Social Services. Lynette Strickland, Social Services. Michelle Williams, Social Services. And our last five-year, Toria Wilson, Public Health. Good, well, she's not here. Let's have a round of applause. All right, moving into 10 years, we have Jason Deere with the Sheriff's Office. Okay, I guess he's not here this morning. Lysidia Flynn, Sheriff's Office. Okay, we have Daniel Hines, Sheriff's Office. Okay, not here. Diana Craig Law, Public Health. She's not here. Randall McGowan, Detention Center. Thomas Miller, Detention Center. Julie Petraso, Social Services. Wow, 10 years. He's been working hard. In her last 10 years...
They're working here to be 15.
Special prizes. Martin Russell, Detention Center. All right. All right, in the 15-year category, Rita Albritton, Social Services. Albritton? Lorinda Mason, Social Services. Next one is not here, but Wanda Nobles with Tax Administration. Could not attend. Jaclyn Sugg, Public Health. Jackie?
Hi, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations. Philip Turbled, MIS, could not attend this morning. And our last 15 years, Beth Wallard, Social Services. Okay, as we enter the 20-year category, we have five silver wrapped boxes up here. As we always announce our kid, the box is a watch the employees picked out to recognize their 20th year of service with Pitt County, and we always kid to watch the next two year, 10 years tick by until they retire. So our first 20-year recognition is to Evelyn Braddock in Social Services. Priscilla Hicks, Sheriff's Office. Kit Keeter, Environmental Health. Gary Watson, Sheriff's Office. And our last 20-year, Mary Wilson, Detention Center. We have one employee in the 25-year category, Stephen Godley, Social Services. Is he here this morning? Okay, and then we have one recognition in the 30-year category, and unfortunately, she could not attend, Michelle McCorkle, Social Services.
Okay, congratulations, everyone, and I know that you have some friends and family, some of you do with you. We have some refreshments in the back room, if you'll enter over here by this door, and everyone here is invited to attend. Thank you again for your service.
The meeting will resume in one minute. The meeting will resume in thirty seconds. The meeting will resume in ten seconds.
Welcome back after our break. And we're going to take the, I guess, the chairman's direction and move to the, we have two employee recognitions and we're going to come down and do those now, right?
Yes ma'am, can we get board action on the first one, the resolution?
Okay, all in favor, let's vote please. I'm about to stick my hand up. Did it come up? Okay, are we, are we voting? Oh, okay.
Did we just do the one or did we do both of them?
No, just the one has to...
Okay.
Well, this morning we have a number of recognitions. We've already done the Employee Service Awards recognition. We also have a recognition of an employee who has met the thirty-year benchmark with Pitt County government. We'd like to ask Marvis Evans to come up, please. And we have a resolution. And Madam Chairman, if you'd like me to read it, I'll be happy to.
Yes, please.
Again, here's a copy of it for the public. It's a resolution honoring Marvis Evans for her years of service with Pitt County government. Whereas Marvis Evans was hired May 1st, 1989 in the position of Income Maintenance Case Worker II at the Pitt County Department of Social Services. And whereas Marvis Evans was promoted to Child Support Agent I on September 22nd, 1996, and then promoted to Child Support Agent II on August 5th, 2001. And whereas Marvis Evans has faithfully served the citizens of Pitt County for thirty-one years and seven months. And whereas Marvis Evans displayed the highest degree of professionalism as shown through her honesty, commitment, and loyalty. Whereas Marvis Evans is respected by her coworkers and the citizens of Pitt County whom she has served through the years. And whereas Marvis Evans is a longstanding member of the North Carolina Child Support Council and the North Carolina Social Services Association. Now therefore be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its gratitude and thanks to Marvis Evans for her career of dedicated and exemplary service to the people of Pitt County and honors her with this resolution of appreciation given under our hand and seal adopted this fourth day of November, 2019. Signed by our Chair Beth B. Ward and by the Clerk Kimberly W. Hines. Madam Chairman?
I'm always glad to be here to do this, but I'm very happy we go back a long ways. Congratulations and thank you so much for your years of service. Appreciate it.
She has her family here.
It has been a pleasure and I did all that I could. I gave it my all. I thank God for the opportunity that was given me to serve here. And I thank God for being in my health and strength that I can continue to do outreach ministry and to help those who are in need in this community. And y'all just keep me in your prayers. I'm thankful, I'm grateful. And then at that, I'm still young, you know.
If we can ask Nicole from HR to come forward. We have a report and a recognition. Nicole from here in the middle maybe. And can you give us, well, let me just first say that Nicole has always, from HR, has organized and ran our United Way campaign. And this year we had a bang-up year with the amount of money raised for United Way in our community through Pitt County government employees. And one thing we promoted was the Fair Share Initiative. And we're going to try to promote that more in the years to come, more next year. But we're going to have a recognition of the employees for that. But do you want to say a word or two just about maybe what we raised? And I got the numbers here if you need them.
Thank you. We did have a very good year for United Way. I would like to thank, first of all, all the United Way committee members and any employee who donated, who contributed in any way. We are very appreciative of what you contributed. Our end result resulted in over $27,000 pledged to United Way of Pitt County. So it will be used to do a tremendous service in our community. And I thank all of you all. We are specifically here though to recognize those fair share donors. Fair share donors are those individuals who chose to contribute one hour of pay per month as their pledge to United Way. So we have several people who did that and that's what we're going to be recognizing. That's who we're going to be recognizing right now.
Okay, we can, we'll call these names out. I'll read the first certificate and... First, first. Certificate of recognition presented Tab Alden, planning for your generous fair share contribution to United Way of Pitt County. Signed by our Chairman, Chairperson Nicole Hall Wilkins. So is Tab here this morning? Okay. Deborah Lovett? Natoya Bullock? All right.
Congratulations there for doing this very much.
Allison Morton? And to be paired with another Elliott, Scott Elliott. Thank you.
Thank you for your help. Thank you, appreciate it.
They must have had a bus to bring them over here if they were all leaving at the same time.
Agenda, we have Scott Darnell. Scott, if you'll come forward, please, with an Economic Development Project. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yep? I guess we're coming forward for the public hearing on Project Link. You know, Project Link was a local company, I'll tell you about it shortly, but in their efforts to expand and grow in Pitt County, we worked with them as the Development Commission on a Build, Reuse, and Redevelopment Grant for the North Carolina Department of Commerce. This is a forgivable grant where job creation is created and then the grant is pledged. And then, once those conditions are met, expansion of the facility in real property, then the grant's forgiven. The grant was $150,000, there's a 5% match. As part of the Pitt County Development Commission's budget, we budget for these things and encourage companies to expand. But Acculink is expanding their facility by 12,000 square feet. It's an all-digital flexible packaging facility with FDA regulations. What that means is if I got creative and learned how to cook and created a cookie company and I wanted to come up with a special packaging with my logo to market my product or distribute it through different channels, I can go to Acculink, they create this opportunity with the packaging to FDA requirements. I put my cookies in that, then we market that. So it's about a $3.5 million investment and through this process, they'll be adding 32 additional jobs. So the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Pitt County was the applicant according to the rules of the grant. It was awarded on, I believe, 10/25/2019. And Acculink cited and wished to express their appreciation for the partnership, for them to continue to grow and create jobs in Pitt County. And again, from the Development Commission's standpoint, thanks for the partnership in allowing Pitt County to be the applicant for this and another success for Pitt County. So thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. And I think I'm to declare a public hearing.
Correct.
Open now. Is there anyone signed up?
No, ma'am.
Is anyone out who would like to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, then I'll declare the public hearing closed and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made in a second. If we'll vote, please. Now Scott, how long have you been with us?
September 23rd.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming forward. I think this is a first. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving forward.
Yes, ma'am.
And next, Scott?
Next, we have Judge Braddy, if you'll come forward. And Janice Gallagher, if you will make any introduction comments on the School Justice Partnership.
Sure. Good morning. Judge Galen Braddy, Chief District Court Judge, is going to speak to you for just a few minutes about the School Justice Partnership. This is a memorandum of understanding. He can give you some quick background and facts and then we'll seek your approval at the end.
Good morning. I am Galen Braddy. I'm the Chief District Court Judge in Pitt County. I see a lot of familiar faces here, so I'm speaking, I feel like I'm speaking to a bunch of friends in here. The School Justice Partnership was set forth as a result of the Raise the Age that's coming up. North Carolina is the last state in the country to raise the age of juvenile delinquents to under 18. As of right now, 16 and 17-year-olds are charged as adults, so they go through the adult criminal system. Under 16 now, they currently go into juvenile court. Now, all 16s and 17s will be put first in juvenile court. That's anticipating a tremendous workload increase on our court system, setting the calendar for our court system and the judge assignments. I've had to add two half-days a month just to, and it's a, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, we don't know what's going to happen. So in 2017, the Chief Justice of North Carolina and the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Act set forth a mandate that all Chief District Court Judges in North Carolina are set up a School Justice Partnership to deal with this. What it does, it tries to address minor offenses that are committed while these kids are in school and get a collaboration between law enforcement, our school administrators, principals to say, is this always going to be warranting a petition? One of the people that mentioned this to me from start said, you know, if you've got kids and your child gets in trouble, are you going to punish them for something minor 30 days later? We don't really associate with what's going on. But we've been working since June on trying to get this. We have had several meetings. We met with law enforcement, we met with the superintendent, the Board of Education. And we initially talked with Janice about what we had to do. And I think everybody's right there to do this. It doesn't affect anybody's discretion. Teachers, principals, law enforcement, it's just an acknowledgement that we had to tackle this situation. And December 1st, we start. And I tried to say this in a brief fashion, I mean, I could probably hold you up for an hour, but to the lawyers in here, no, they don't, they're brief when they come in front of me, so I'm briefing in front of y'all. But I'll take any questions.
Okay. Anybody have a question?
Yes. On page nine of the MOU, I was wondering if item K, if other school personnel could be added to that. You said educators, and there are personnel within the schools who are not educated, but interact with...
And for instance, who would you be referring to, Commissioner Williams?
Counselor.
The counselors, librarian, they're educators, so to speak, but, you know, other school personnel, because they need to be respected as well. I just want you to consider it.
They will be included.
And the only reason that they're not included in that, a lot of the people that are included in this MOU, there's a template that was presented to all the district court judges, all the chief district court judges, and it had a bunch of categories. And some of those fall under those titles. But I don't mind going back and speaking with, you know, the school board attorney, the police attorney, and seeing if they had any issue with that. But if you would give me some examples of who you want, I mean, usually it's one representative from every one of those agencies. So if it's like a librarian, one person from one school was signing their representation, and then we'd have other people come up. The Chief Justice of North Carolina is coming down November 13th to have a ceremony to recognize Pitt County's ability to have this put into place. And it's going to be a pretty big production, because I'm afraid if we didn't get this locked in, the legislature was going to require that. One of the biggest concerns is how the juvenile code and the juvenile administration of justice in all the counties may have a disproportionate impact on minorities. And that's one thing, if you look at MOU, it's everybody's cognizant of that issue. And it's been a substantial mandate for us to make sure we address all these concerns. I don't have a problem, again, going back with that.
I'd just like to see it considered. And on page 13 of the MOU 7.02, I would like to know if the data that you collect will be available to the general public.
Can I just say one thing in reference to, because it's a very good point, because everybody in the school is connected to the children and they see things that are happening or they hear things. But I think by naming these people that are in there, I think it has the word educators. And what will happen is, you know, anybody will come forward, it could be a custodian even. I mean, I remember as a principal, all of these people, it's a community, and everybody communicated and helped. And I think it's just saying that these people, when it's communicated to them, would bring it forward. So I think that, you know, what you want is there, because it's kind of already, you know, being done. And it does name other people in it. It says, "Learning Environment, Fall Students, Educators, and SROs."
But, you know, janitors are not educators. They interact, yes.
And it kind of depends on the school and how they're looked at.
A lemon eaves a mouth.
Right.
I just want them to consider it. I didn't say that.
Right, okay.
But I'd want it to be discussed or considered and the data available to the general public without the personnel as to who they are or whatever, but certain agents and data of areas might benefit for parents to check ties.
And Commissioner, I think we can provide that information. We can't specifically refer to any particular student.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Based upon confidential nature of some of this stuff, because they try to recognize these kids who are not going to be considered adults. And we don't want them starting off on a bad foot. I mean, look, when I went to school, the janitors, the librarians, the principal, anybody saw you cutting up, they spanked you and then took you to the principal and they would spank you. And then you got it again when you went home. It's a different ballgame. But I certainly respect what you're saying. And I'll have to see what the Chief Justice says about the confidentiality of that. They'll make an overall requirement. We're anticipating having quarterly meetings to get that information and maybe make modifications of this.
I was talking about without the personnel stuff, the name and who it is, that's not important. But the data, certain age groups, certain groups of people, if they're farmers or cities or, you know, people, that's what I'm saying. That would help the general community.
We get a good bit of our information from the Department of Juvenile Justice. They have stats on all this. You know, the schools, they had the stats on each individual school, each number of petitions from each school. And there's some general information we'll take to see how we respond to this. I mean, this first six months, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know. And I'll tell you, Pitt County does a great job with diverting young folks through the Department of Juvenile Justice. Teen Court is a valuable tool that's being used right now to help reduce the load. I anticipate most of these kids charged, 16 and 17, are going to be after 3 o'clock. I mean, that's the way it is right now.
Well, the reason I raised that, and all true information, is hard to get simple data of out-of-school suspension from the school system. You request it several times and you don't get it. And that should be readily available, because we need to know what children, because you see them walking around days and you want to know if this child is a school-aged child. And the parent need to know that this child should be in school. I mean, community can help in a way, but to not know and not have it, and you can't even get out-of-school suspension, I find that a really unacceptable.
And I'll tell you, and I've been doing this almost 20 years, I've dealt with a number of juveniles. A lot of juveniles want to be suspended from school, because then they go home, they got free rein.
That's right.
I mean, maybe the biggest punishment they might get is being required to stay in school and force them to get their education. But, you know, over the years, my thought process has been modified just from dealing with it and getting that experience in there. You know, we hope we can catch all these kids. And juvenile court system is geared toward getting them back on the right path. It's not necessarily a punishment that you have in adult court. So we're hoping this whole collaboration will address that and make it a focal point. It's not going to take anybody's discretion to do their job, and that was a concern from the very get-go. But I'd be glad to take any recommendation from the commission and go back and try to get it implemented and see if we get everybody on board. Because this, every, every police department that has a school resource officer, we had to get them to agree to it. We had to get the superintendent to agree to it, the school board attorney to agree to it, the board of education to agree to it. When we get all those people in one room, there's a diverse number of opinions about what should and shouldn't be in there. So we've kind of worked on this since June, trying to get it pinned down. And, you know, there's other counties that had it that are really strict, and we knew from the get-go, we'd never get it passed. But I felt like if we didn't get our own, Pitt County would be told by the legislature, this is what you will do. You will take kids home from school for this offense and that offense, you can't divert them in this. And that was not what either law enforcement or school administration wanted.
But I think maybe we could probably, in the process, get a report as to the numbers who are out for whatever reason, but no names, because I know that can't be done.
Right.
So I think that that would be...
That's not what I, I'm not asking for names, I'm asking for data.
Right, I know you're not, but just the data.
I get, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Because we want to be supportive, is kind of what we're trying to do.
And other counties that's got it, the county commission, the city councils have jumped in and started providing funding. And New Hanover County, they were so impressed with it, that they really liked it. I'd be glad to share, come, I can report to you.
Madam Chairman? If I'm in order, I move that we approve this.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, it passes. Thank you very much, Judge.
Thank you. And anytime y'all need any information about this, please feel free to contact us at the courthouse.
Thank you for your appearance.
Okay, next, we have public addresses to the board. Do we have anybody signed up?
This time, there's nobody signed up, unless there's somebody in the audience who'd like to come forward.
Is there anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up?
And speak.
That would like to speak towards anything? Okay, we've seen no one, so we'll go to the manager. Items for report.
Okay, Tim Corley will come up. We have a department spotlight this morning, and what we've done in the past is asked department heads to come up and basically explain what their job responsibilities entail, so you have an idea and the public has an idea of what each department actually does in service to the citizens of Pitt County. So this morning, we have Tim Corley, he is our Director of Public Facilities and Engineering.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Glad to be in front of you this morning to talk about some of the duties and responsibilities that engineering and some of the other departments that I'm going to talk about have within Pitt County Government and their role. First off, I'll start with just kind of engineering and facilities as a whole. These are some of the departments that I myself have oversight of as the director. Engineering, permitting, inspections, solid waste and recycling, and building in the grounds. Y'all have probably seen me up here several times about different issues regarding all these different departments. So yeah, most of y'all are probably aware of that. First, I'll talk a little bit about engineering, work a little bit on project management. That includes some of our larger-scale projects, such as the shelter renovation expansion, the sheriff administration building that we're getting ready to start, some of those large-scale buildings, as well as some of just general projects throughout the county. Some of those may be with county funds or without county funds. Could be grants or partnerships with other groups. So just overall project management. I work with the Planning Department on plan review. That includes site plan review, erosion control review, stormwater plan review, and subdivision review. So I'm one of the folks, our department is one of the folks that helps planning in that role of reviewing those plans and making sure all the regulations that are required are met. Then our facilities management, which is our CIP. As you know, we have a CIP line item within our budget. And this includes projects such as roof replacements or roof repair projects, HVAC replacements, as well as carpet, other major items within the county that need addressed as far as facilities go. We've tried to be a lot more proactive in our addressing those items and planning ahead for those repairs and those replacements as we move along. Then we have solid waste and recycling, work with our Director, John Demery, on that. As you know, there's a lot of operations that go on there, I'll talk a little about that in a minute. And then our housekeeping contract, which is through ECBC. If you're not aware, they do our housekeeping throughout all our county-owned facility buildings. And they do a great job... If you're not aware, they do our, uh, our housekeeping throughout all our county-owned facility buildings, uh, and they do a great job of doing that. And then our HVAC preventative maintenance contract, oversight of that, which, uh, is Piedmont Service Group. Uh, we've had them for several years. I believe this is maybe on our fifth year of having them, uh, perform the preventative maintenance, uh, throughout the county. And, uh, overall, they've done a, a good job in keeping our HVAC, uh, throughout the county up and running and, uh, in good shape. Uh, just a couple, uh, projects from the last couple of years, just wanted to kind of give you an idea of some of the projects. In two thousand eighteen, we had our radio and paging project, uh, which actually is still going on, uh, hopefully soon to be completed. Uh, that was our seven-site, uh, county-wide radio and paging system that, uh, the county, a multimillion-dollar project, uh, that we helped kind of manage that. Um, we had capital projects that went on that year, where, as I said, we've, uh, tried to implement those every year and get those approved within our budget. Uh, and we replaced a portion of our transfer station floor out at the, uh, solid waste recycling facility out on Allen Road, our transfer station. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, uh, we began our animal shelter expansion project. We also had some capital projects, uh, we placed a cooling tower at the courthouse, uh, as well as the roof of the tax assessor building. So just some items that, uh, we continue to try to improve our facilities and our buildings, uh, throughout the county. Uh, then we worked with planning on the Woodmore Farms project. That was, uh, one of the projects where we went in and, uh, the citizens actually of the, of the, uh, neighborhood actually petitioned us to go in and make the improvements to the streets so that they could be accepted by NC DOT. So that was a project we, uh, completed last year. As far as construction goes, um, still waiting on NC DOT to provide, uh, concurrence from their board, uh, which I believe should happen very soon, that they've been accepted formally, so. Just a couple of other pictures, uh, that's our animal shelter expansion project, uh, which we are, uh, currently u- undergoing on. Uh, and then there is one of our towers that where our equipment was placed in, in, uh, one of the facilities that our radio and paging system utilized, uh, for tower rental. Uh, as, as you may know or may not know, uh, the towers that we utilized on that system were all lease options, uh, we decided to go that route. So I'll talk a little bit next about permitting. Our permitting office, uh, deals with all sorts of building permits, uh, demolition permits, electrical permits, plumbing permits, uh, mechanical, uh, permits on new construction as well as renovations. So, um, deal with quite a few permits. In eighteen nineteen, there was four thousand three hundred thirty-six permits issued. We've, uh, we've got a staff of three, uh, that works up in the permitting office, um, and, uh, they do a great job in, uh, entering all the in- information into the system and, and providing those permits for our inspectors, uh, to go out and perform their work. Uh, and that leads to the next group, which is our inspections group. Uh, there also, uh, we have, uh, three full-time inspectors and one, uh, part-time inspector. Uh, and they do the new, the new construction and renovation, they do all those, uh, trades that I mentioned, they do all the inspections for those trades, uh, throughout the county. However, they don't do farmable, grainable, winterable. So those jurisdictions have their own, uh, inspections and permitting, uh, process. And, uh, within their city limits, they perform their own, uh, and actually within the ETJ, they perform their own inspections. So they handle that. Uh, just for numbers sake, uh, know the scope of kind of what our inspectors deal with. Uh, our staff performed five hundred eighty-six plan reviews in eighteen nineteen, and did seven thousand seventy-five inspections. So, uh, quite a bit of work going on in the county. And as you can see, uh, those guys work hard to, uh, those folks work hard to, uh, to make sure that we get our inspections done in a timely manner for all the contractors out there. Uh, next is our solid waste and recycling, uh, group. Uh, as you know, they have, uh, the transfer station out on Allen Road, as well as fourteen convenience sites located, uh, throughout the county. They handle just the normal trash that comes in, uh, recycling, we do all sorts of recycling. We recycle not only the construction and demolition waste, uh, there's a picture of the construction demolition facility, uh, that we put in place a couple of years ago, that, uh, contractors come in and, and, and dump their material. And, uh, we have pickers along the, the top of that green box there that, that go through the material and pull out the stuff that's recyclable. But we also work with ECVC, uh, on, you know, recycling the, uh, things that go in, uh, blue, blue boxes and get stuff that gets dropped off at our convenience sites, uh, for recycling as well. Also handle yard waste with the facility in Aiden, uh, behind the Aiden Convenience Site that, uh, takes the yard waste as well as, uh, at the transfer station on Allen Road. And then we come to buildings and grounds. So they're just responsible for general county facility maintenance, um, and that includes, you know, general construction and repair. Uh, if there's a group that needs, uh, a wall constructed or, uh, try to renovate a space to facilitate a new individual or make two offices into three or whatever it may be. They're usually the folks that, uh, that we get to do those types of construction projects. Uh, they also do roof repairs, uh, and help assist the engineering and, in the, uh, mo- management of, uh, roof projects throughout the county. Uh, they also have a licensed plumber, uh, licensed electrician on staff that, uh, perform a lot of those duties throughout the county buildings. And then they help us with the mechanical contract, uh, with one individual in building in the grounds that is kind of our point person, uh, for Piedmont Service Group and our HVAC maintenance contract. And then they're also responsible for the, uh, mowing contract. Uh, all that is done, uh, out of house as far as, uh, it's contracted out, as far as all the mowing and upkeep of the facilities, uh, in the county, and, uh, they're in charge of that, so. And that's, uh, all the departments within, uh, engineering and facilities. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about what we do and services we provide.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
A good report. I think that it needed to be done, it's a lot. Big job. Thank you. Okay, uh, the Pitt Greenville Airport. Mr. Hopper, if you'll come forward. Good morning.
How you doing this morning?
Good morning.
First of all, I just wanted to thank the, uh, the Board of Commissioners for inviting me this morning to give a, an update on how we're doing. Also, I just want to do a, a, a special thank you for Mr. Fitzpatrick, who serves on our Board of Directors, and, uh, thank you very much. We'll go and get started here, uh, just, uh, first of all. All right. Okay, just, uh, kind of an overview of what we'll be looking at. First of all, we'll be getting into some facts and statistics. Uh, we'll also talk a little bit about community engagement. Uh, we've really stepped it up quite a bit at the airport, which I'm very happy to say, we're, uh, you know, we're very much a part of this community and, and want to, to make sure that the community feels welcome at the airport. And, uh, and also just that, uh, the community understands the importance of a, of a thriving airport to its community. Go a little bit into our capital program, uh, air service development and economic development, talk a little bit about that, and then, uh, do a little, uh, talk a little bit about the finances. Uh, just first of all, facts and statistics. Uh, we do have a staff, it's a very lean staff, uh, for the airport, uh, twenty. Uh, we pretty much take care of everything. Uh, most airports, uh, that you, that you have, they, they usually, uh, just, uh, handle like maintenance and operational activities. We also end, handle the business end as well. Uh, it's, uh, you know, there's not many airports that, that handle all the parking of aircraft and fueling, and, uh, it, it's a very big part of what we do. And also, uh, something that when we go out and try to, uh, you know, uh, see if we can get additional business at the airport, a very, uh, important thing that we have there. It gives us a little leverage and a little more control over, over how we negotiate that. Our passengers are over a hundred thousand, as you're going to see a little later, we are growing just a little bit. Uh, operations are on track for nineteen thousand operations, that's every takeoff and landing, uh, and we're, we're doing very well there, uh, increasing quite a bit. And I'll show some, some graphs that show that. Uh, operating budget is three point four million, which is pretty much on track with what we've, uh, been doing historically. Um, the, the, uh, we are a single airline airport with American Airlines, and we are working, uh, to, to expand that, and I'll talk a little bit there. Based aircraft, this is, uh, if you, if you take, uh, New Bern, uh, Jacksonville and us, we by far have the most based aircraft of, of, of the three airports. And that is, that's very important. Those are, uh, those are a nice tax base, uh, to the local community, as well as they buy fuel and, and, uh, rent space at the airport. And, uh, just, uh, a, a study that was done by the state of North Carolina, uh, we are, we do have a two hundred and eighty million dollar economic impact to the community, uh, which is, is very significant and, uh, and, and could only grow if we can get this airport to grow. Um, this just shows our passenger numbers. As you can see, we are up a little bit, about five point four eight percent. Uh, last year, we did a little over fifty thousand employments. We're, uh, maybe approaching, uh, if we can stay on track, although we do kind of slow down a little bit in September, uh, well, actually in October a little bit. However, we, uh, are kind of approaching the sixty thousand employment or maybe, uh, up to a hundred and, uh, twenty thousand total passengers. Total aircraft operations, this is where we've had a lot of growth. Uh, as you can see, the red line there, now, last year, if you look at August, September, we did, I guess we had to unplug the, the, uh, system we have for, for measuring air traffic, uh, you know, uh, airport operations because of Hurricane Florence. We did an anticipation of that. However, if you look at the, the yellow lines as well, uh, we, we have some pretty good growth there, and, uh, we're very happy with that. We feel a lot of that is because we've, uh, been very competitive with fuel costs, uh, with, with the price of our fuel. And, uh, we took a look at it, and we had the highest-priced fuel in the area, and, uh, we, we have, uh, taken a really good look at and, and, and evaluated it carefully. And right now, we are, uh, making just a little bit more money than we were in the past, however, we're getting a lot of activity. And I, I think activity is, is what you want. You want to try to, to get that, uh, recognition, the airport to, because airports aren't just Pitt County. They, you know, pilots will fly from a hundred miles away just to, just to go to another airport. So, uh, we're very happy with this growth. Hundred low lead, this is the type of fuel, uh, that the, that the, uh, uh, the, the private aircraft owner typically bu- purchases. Um, and we've been, we've gone up considerably. That's where we've, uh, been very competitive, uh, with our, our fuel costs. And you can see right there that, uh, that, that the transient airplane, aircraft, which are the airplanes not based, uh, at Pitt Greenville has grown considerably. You see from eight hundred and eighty-four last year to, to twenty forty-nine. Uh, and then if you look at the, uh, the yellow line, uh, the, the based aircraft customers have been, have been purchasing, uh, fuel as well. Jet A, this is what goes into corporate jets, the, the, uh, commercial aircraft. Uh, this one has gone down just a little bit. Um, we've had, uh, we have one base tenant, uh, who has relocated their aircraft to, to, uh, to Raleigh Durham, so, which has had a little bit of an effect. Uh, plus, um, last year, we had, um, uh, Rocky Mount, uh, Wilson Rocky Mount Airport, uh, had their, their, uh, runway closed, and we were getting quite a bit of activity from that. Caterpillar, uh, had, uh, did quite a bit of, um, uh, you know, actually, it's, uh, Collins Diesel, or they did a quite a bit of Cummings Diesel, I'm sorry, uh, did quite a bit of, uh, flying back and forth. They, they, uh, have a group of, uh, employees that come here on a weekly basis, and they were purchasing quite a bit of fuel. So we've seen a little bit of a, of a decline there. Parking lot numbers, uh, they are up a little bit. Uh, we had a decline last month, uh, which was concerning to us, but we, uh, are, uh, then you see that we kind of, uh, climbed back up just a little bit this past month. We had kind of a slow month in September last year. So our parking lot numbers are kind of, kind of, I'd say, uh, leveling off. Right now, in the age of Uber and Lyft, a lot of airports are seeing significant decline, uh, in, in parking lot operations. So that's something that we're looking at, and we are entertaining the possibility of maybe having some sort of fee for that. Most airports have those fees, and, uh, it, it only stand to reason that, uh, you know, that people pay their fair share to utilize the facilities. And community engagement, um, this is something we've really stepped up quite a bit. Uh, we've, uh, if you look down there, we, we've been involved in the, uh, uh, the Chamber Business Expo, which is, uh, something that, that, uh, you know, in the past, uh, the airport hasn't really been involved in. You know, our, our, uh, we, we are very much, uh, part of the business community, and we, and we want to be a part of that, um, as well as some other events. We just had, I don't know if anybody looked up in the sky, but we had the Ford Tri-Motor, uh, this last weekend, and, and that was very popular. Um, a, a very, uh, a very nice, ni- nice airplane, and, uh, we had, they had a very good response to that. Uh, one thing I don't have in here that we did have, we had a, a Halloween event at the airport, and, uh, it, it, we actually had a lot more than we expected. And I kept having to run, run the food line and get candy and everything to kind of replenish. Uh, it was very good, and, and we look to do it next year and be a little more prepared next year as well. Uh, but, uh, it was, it was a, a very nice event. People just never really had an opportunity to, to come into the airport, that especially some of the local neighborhood there, and, uh, we're very happy to host that. Uh, we're going to be having touch a truck, uh, in April, um, with the youth league. Uh, it's typically been held down at the mall, and we're, we're planning to have it at the airport, and we're going to try to see if we can get some airplanes, maybe touch an airplane as well. Uh, but the very least, we're going to have our nice, uh, fire truck out there to, 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 uh, uh, so they can have a look at that. Uh, we're working, uh, with the local charitable organization on an airplane pole. Uh, we also have a, uh, the Free To Be Me, which, uh, funds the, the Children's Hospital over at Vident, and, uh, we have that every year and, and a very nice event where, uh, children that are in the hospital get to come out, participate. Uh, it's typically in, in April-May timeframe, and, uh, they, 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 uh, get to just kind of forget about the issues or the problems that they're having, them and their family, and they go out and they fly in an aircraft. We have, uh, local private pilots, last year was about six of them, uh, that took children in the air. And we just have many other events, and so we're just, uh, you know, looking to really step it up, you know, as, as far as hosting the community to the airport. Um, rebranding, I, I, I believe last time I, uh, talked to the board, uh, the Board of Commissioners, uh, we were in the process of rebranding. Uh, we've gotten quite a ways. Uh, we just have some, some very simple, well, actually, kind of the more major, uh, uh, cost items. Um, we have like the, the treads that are in the front foyers, we want to rebrand those, uh, as well as out on, uh, Memorial Drive. I'm working with the, uh, the, uh, City of Greenville, uh, the DPW to, to, uh, replace that sign and, and, uh, and we want to have a really nice sign. We also want to, you know, we want to welcome people to City of Greenville at that point, because we don't really have a north, uh, welcome in, in the city, and then also combine it with the airport as well. Um, this is our FAA Capital Improvement Program. Uh, it shows, starts at twenty twenty. Uh, we are in twenty nineteen, we have a couple of very major projects, uh, that, that, that I'll touch on, uh, after this. But this just kind of shows you just that some of the capital needs that we have. Uh, the FAA, uh, funds ninety percent of projects, and then you have a ten percent local share fund, uh, local match that, uh, you know, that we have, it's reimbursable. And, uh, what we do is, is we go out five years, we're going to pass five years in this, uh, just, uh, just because we kind of put other things that, that may be, uh, coming down the, coming down the, the pike. Uh, however, uh, as you can see, we have a lot of, uh, work that we'd like to do on, on aprons and taxiways. The, the airport, uh, you know, has, has a lot of, uh, it's, it's getting, it's getting a bit tired, um, and, uh, we're, we're looking to try to step up, you know, getting it, uh, replenished a little bit. It, it is a gateway. You got, you have to look that when, especially businesses or people that are interviewing for jobs, whatever the case may be, the, the airport may be the first place they see, uh, in, in, in many cases, and, and, and is the impression of the community. And so you want that, that impression to be good. Uh, so we, we are, uh, trying to work it up, step it up, freshen the place up a bit. Um, some of our projects that we have this year, uh, that are FAA-funded, we, first of all, is our new fire truck. It's a little over a seven hundred thousand dollar, uh, item. Uh, they, uh, they, pretty much they time out every ten years. Ours is twenty years old, so it's, it's well overdue, it's, it's been working great. And in fact, we'll, we'll keep it as a backup, because we're, we'll take our other backup, uh, put that, uh, you know, probably sell it off as surplus, uh, and then we'll get the, the newer truck. Um, and, uh, we're very excited to get that, uh, Oshkosh Truck Company in Wisconsin is who we're working with, and, uh, we should probably have it within less than a year from now. It, it does take quite a while to, to make one of these. Another thing we have is our general aviation apron project. If you look there, you see kind of a light blue, that's where the construction's going to happen. This is going to expand our general aviation apron. Uh, our general, it, it's, it's not so much the, the number of parking spaces, it's more to meet new standards, uh, that the FAA has, that, that have, have come about since the airport was originally constructed. Uh, the, if, if you'll notice that, uh, the, the, the dark, uh, parts on the, on the map, those are parts that are going to be taken out. Uh, the FAA for, for safety, they, uh, because, uh, they don't want aircraft going out and maybe cutting off another airplane that's landing or taking off. So they're trying to take direct routes out to the runways and, and make it so that you have to maybe take a, a left or a right turn. And so they'll be replaced with those blue lines, and they'll also be up to newer standards where they have, you know, not as, not as, uh, sharp of a, of a cut. Because airplanes are not meant to drive on the ground, they're meant to fly. And so you, you, you want to try to accommodate that. And that, just to let you know, that's, uh, about, right around a four million dollar project, it's being split over two years. Uh, we got a three point four million dollar grant this year, uh, from the FAA for that, and then we'll be looking for the, the, uh, remaining portion, uh, into next year. It's going to be seamless, because as long as all the funding and everything comes on time, uh, the, the, the additional money will just get added on to the project, and we can just kind of continue on with it. Um, other grant notes, these are just kind of past grants that we're still working on. Uh, we do still have quite a bit of, of, of land, uh, you know, i- in the way of abrogation easements and fee simple purch- and fee simple purchases that we're, we're currently doing. That has to do with what they call AIP, these are just Airport Improvement Program numbers. We have the, the, you'll notice we have a million dollar project for that as well as in the AIP forty-six, that involves some of it, but mostly what that project has to do with is tree clearing. And so, we, we've been doing quite a bit of that and are, and are wrapping up that project. It also, we also did some runway work on that project as well. And we're just waiting for the North Carolina budget to, to get approval from the state. There's some money in there that, that, that would be coming our way once they get passed. We get about a million dollar grant, just a little bit over that, that we would anticipate from North Carolina, as well as there's a three hundred thousand dollar entitlement money that goes to, to commercial airports as well. And this is just, this is what's not funded by FAA, this is just what we're looking at for, for different projects. We are working with the City of Greenville. There are some drainage issues that affect the neighborhoods that come right through the airport. We're working with the City of Greenville on that and that, that may be some of what I use the state money for, once it comes our way, to, to try to help fund those. And of course, we're always looking for hangar development and that may be a part of what I might want to look towards the North Carolina money for as well. And then we have a, a ninety acres north of the airport that we, we're, we're just getting ready to really start pushing. I don't feel like we've really marketed that heavily. I just brought a person on board and she's been, she's been starting to develop a plan for, for marketing the, the property up there as well because we feel like there's some, some really good things, you know, people like being near airports, a lot of businesses and so we do have some land that would put them right up there. And just some other things that we're doing, we are also, we're, we're taking, it, it's been a few years, probably as far as I know, maybe five or six, since they've really come up with a plan at the airport that takes the, the needs, like the equipment needs, replacement needs. I'm sure that many of you have been in the terminal, it's looking a bit tired. And so, we're, we're looking, we're looking to, to take a complete look at how much this is going to cost, put it into a five-year plan and then, and then try to make sure that we make these repla, you know, these replacements. I mean, it, it's been neglected for quite a while and, and, and we're right, we want to start making commitment to start putting money into this, into that facility and make it so that, that it's something that we can all be proud of. And so, we are developing that five-year plan right now. And then I'll get into the fun stuff, which is the air service development. We have not heard about the grant. I know last time I reported on Small Community Air Service Development Program Grant. We did apply for it, have not heard about it. And last I heard, it was late, late October is what they said. Well, late October's passed, so hopefully maybe early November will be what we have. This just kind of gives you a visual of, of where we are. If you look at American Airlines out of Charlotte, all those red lines, that's, that's where they fly, that's one stop out of Charlotte. And so, if, if, if you take that, now you look down below, if we could get a one stop out of Dulles Airport, which is what we're really trying to pursue, you can see just where it opens it up. And especially on the international side, we have quite a, you know, in talking to, to local businesses, there, there is, you know, they, they want some international connectivity and, and some ease in, in connectivity. And so, if you look at that, you, you see how it just opens up the international side. Charlotte's a fantastic hub, American's a great airline, however, we want to supplement what we've got there. Charlotte's also getting more congested. Dulles tends to be not as congested, it's, it's, it's a newer airport that was built back in the sixties, it's designed to take on more traffic. And so, we are, you know, so we're, we're very hopeful and, and continue to work. We just met with some prospective airlines last week and, and looked to continue meeting with them because we want to try to get this thing lined up. If, if we're to get the grant, we want to really push them hard and, and, and try to make a good case for, for why they should locate a, you know, a station here. This just gets into kind of some, some financials. If you look at the, the end of 2018, we were at about three point three million dollars in revenues and, and three, a little under three point four in expenses. Right now, we're about three, just a little under three point seven, three six eight in revenues and about three point seven expenses. We have a, a net income of minus with the parentheses of, of forty thousand eight thirty-one. What we're looking is different revenue sources to try to even that out a little bit. So, we are working on that. And the, and, and just some, some general numbers, we do have a cash balance as of, and actually this is the end of 2019, not 2018, I apologize, but cash balance of that three point four six eight. In it, we do have some, some money that we've restricted money for a hangar fund that's at one point one million. And then a restricted in other areas for like AIP and, and those sort of projects of nine thirty-five and then an unrestricted of one point four million. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioners? Okay, let's start, I saw you first Melvin and then Mary and then Alex.
Thank you for your presentation, it was a very good presentation. Some, maybe eight years ago, maybe longer, it was a federal Noah's Land Survey Grant and, and you did it specifically in the Greenville terrorist area. I, I've had several older people in that area was, was telling me that they have still haven't been affected by some of the doors, doors level over there. Are you planning to have that survey anytime in the future, taking place again?
Yeah, I, I don't have it in the budget, it's always something that we could take a look at. I do know that, you know, it's, it's typically they, they do those every ten to twenty years and I do believe it's been quite a while. I, I, I don't know the exact date that it was last done, but it's definitely something that we could look into and I'd be happy to, to talk with you afterward if you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
I have several questions. The community has always paid attention to the airport and the top of the list that their concerns relating to will Highway thirty-three West be cut off by the airport?
Oh, no.
I got a direct no from that.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's just say it's the first I've heard about it.
Okay. Another concern, there's a rumor that there has been a second line being recruited. The question is, how soon would the second line of aviation come into the area? Are you recruiting, is my question.
Second?
Airport, you know.
Airline? Oh, that does, part of what I just, yeah, they, we're, we've got one airline in particular. We applied for a Small Community Air Service Development Program Grant, which is a grant for Department of Transportation to help mitigate some of the risks that an airline has. We had one airline actually give us a letter of support, which is, is that, that's what this airport has never received before. And so, our hopes are that we, you know, with that letter of support, that we are going to be able to get the grant. That doesn't guarantee, you know, because the airline can always still say no. However, we do, you know, we, we have continuous discussions with that particular airline and that's one where we're talking about the Dulles service. These things take time. So, it could be, you know, it, typically they take like a year or so because, you know, even once you have the announcement, it's going to take a few months. But yes, we are talking with another airline on a regular basis and, and our hopes are that if we get the grant, that will be kind of what, you know, puts us over the edge and, and maybe we can get that service.
Okay. The effort for community environment and appreciate your effort in that because I did have something about tours for underprivileged children, wanted to see a plane, wanted to see how it looks and, and know what it takes to fly and that sort of thing. And I, whatever you're doing in that, that's a consideration. That, that wasn't a complaint, that was just an observation, so I received that. The complaint was revolving flight frequency cancellation. There was an agency where they were to fly to Philadelphia and some was booked. I was booked to, out of New Bern, so they first had to get me from here to New Bern and then from New Bern to where I had to go. And one of the others were booked out of Greenville. The flight in Greenville was canceled and I'm told that they often don't use Greenville because of flight cancellation. And the frequency of flight cancellation means that it, it changes the whole schedule of travel for people, business to take care of as it relates to other organizations. So, the complaint relates to flight cancellation. I don't know what you can do about it, I'm not a pilot, but I do know that was a complaint that I received. You, you said you have a five-year plan of, on your table. I want to know, is it accessible to public? Can I get a copy?
If, we have not, we don't, we haven't put it together yet, it's something that we're working on. Once we have it, I would, it's definitely going to be public information.
I would like very much to get a copy. Marketing property. All of the hotels and service for customers and, and air travel is on the south side of the river. There's property available in that area and hotels was brought up, restaurants was brought up and the wait time when you have to wait for flights has been, if you have issues in travel, it's been a problem for customers. So, that's a consideration that you need to look at.
Okay, we, we did just open a restaurant.
Okay.
In, in the terminal, so.
There used to be one in there.
Yeah, so, so hopefully that'll help out with, with something.
Okay, fumes. I understand that some properties are being purchased.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of the runway. And people, I've moved, so my family has respiratory problems, asthma and other allergies that involve breathing. There's been complaints about fumes and you've cut some trees in a neighborhood and they don't know whether it's airport and they think it's airport, but the, the trees help deter some of that direct hit from the fumes. There was a military veteran who owns property in that area and he gave me a real sermon about fumes and the poisonous of jet propels and, and what it's into, told me more than I ever really wanted to know. But what he had to say was important to me because the fumes impact the health of citizens at a time when they are sleeping, resting and in their normal lifespan. So, I don't know what you're going to do about that, but I want to let you know what kind of comments, criticism and concerns that people have raised with me.
Okay, any, and always welcome to give my number. I'm always happy to talk with people and just see if there's different things that we can, that we can do. You know, there's, there's, there's definitely going to be limitations just because, you know, where, where the airport is and however, it, it doesn't mean there aren't things that maybe we can do, especially from an effort of, of, you know, some operational things, so.
I want you to know, top is that first one I mentioned.
What's that?
Cut off a Highway thirty-three. It's a rumor mill. And, and our county manager's heard it more than once and we've had a meeting on that in the area because that rumor mill is busy. And that was the first thing you answered, is that Highway thirty-three West will not be closed or cut off from the rest of the city.
The first I've heard that rumor is probably the best.
I just want you to let you know.
There's, there's no current plans where we're.
No, no current plans.
So, and then if I get that five-year plan and then I can have something in my head and say, see, here it is, because the community is concerned and I don't read between the lines very well. Thank you so much for your patience and I'd like to get a copy of your presentation.
Okay, thank you. And when we get the five-year plan, Mr., Mr. Fitzpatrick will, he's, he's on the board, he'll, he'll know when it's approved, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Alex.
Thanks for the presentation and for your ideas and especially, I think, for making that area look better and for all the improvements that you're engineering for the airport. My question is pretty simple, I've been to a tractor pull, but I'm kind of having a hard time thinking what an airplane pull is.
I was wondering about that.
It's actually where they get together a team, what hap, they, they get together a team and they pay an entry fee and usually it's like anywhere between ten and twenty people and they compete to see who can pull an airplane a certain distance the fastest.
People are pulling the planes, not planes pulling against each other.
No, people are pulling the planes, so, yeah, and so, so, you know, needs to be pretty physically fit. I, I hope it happens because they're, they're pretty fun, they're a lot of fun.
And I want to thank you for your presentation also, but listening to you came to, something came to mind for me is that I hope that you and Scott Darnell will get together because you mentioned the ninety acres of land you have for development. So, I, I would think that the two of you all would be talking.
I've, I've got Scott my cell phone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation and Ann, I had that down to say, I could see Scott's smile and eyebrows going up when they were speaking and I knew that they had been connected and all of that, the development for the county and what goes on at the airport. And already, I think those of us who have seen these reports in the past see that there is a plan, their ideas coming forward and that has been much needed and thank you for that leadership.
Thank you.
Oh, I want to say how pretty it is by the airport.
Doesn't it look nice?
How clean it is and the flowers. When, when there's compliments to be made, I want you to know that I will make them and that it's nice over there and it makes it look good on Memorial Drive. Thank you for maintenance.
You're what, did you ever notice, I don't know if you noticed, they, there was not an American flag at that airport.
Yes, I did.
And there is one now and it's well lit too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the manager's report.
All right, a few things to report on, the next meeting dates, in the month of November, you'll have the third Monday, November eighteenth at six o'clock meeting. Then the month of December will be a normal meeting schedule, first Monday, December second, nine AM.
We're not going to have one after that?
Yeah, you'll have a, a third, third Monday.
Yes, we have a, two in December.
Yes.
The second one is usually pretty quick.
On the public health, the North Carolina DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services grant applications, Health had two grant applications that were due in about mid-October. In years past, they had not needed to seek board approval on these or, or have, actually submit them, they were just given to the county. One is for Family Planning Services, this is a grant for one hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-eight that is provided annually over three years, that'll be about three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And the other one is for the Community Linkages to Care for Overdose Prevention and Response. This will be two hundred and fifty thousand for a three-year period. Again, this is funding we currently receive, but in the past, we didn't have to apply for it, but things have changed within DHHS and they went ahead and applied for these, we're just announcing this, so this is not anything new. On item C, if I can ask Michelle Bailey to come up with Lisa Ammanson, Ammenson? And we'd like to have Michelle report an award she received and tell us a little bit about this.
Good morning, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to brag on my department and my employees. So, there is a North Carolina Animal and Rabies Control Association that has existed for the last forty-four years. Every year, there is an annual training conference and at that training conference, they give out awards across the state. I was on this board for twelve years and served as president and the highlight was always the awards banquet to, for me, to be able to recognize outstanding people in our field. So, I was really pleased, in two thousand and sixteen, Chris Arnold, who is an employee of ours, was awarded the Animal Control Officer of the Year. And then this year, we just returned, Lisa was presented the Support Personnel of the Year Award. She was presented with this plaque and recognized for outstanding and dedicated performance in support of animal-related services. Lisa is very content being in the background and not being out and about in the spotlight, so I'm making her super embarrassed right now. But it's always good to highlight the dedicated employees we have. Lisa first started with us as a volunteer, she moved to part-time and then she just got her Five-Year Service Award this morning for being employed with us for five years as full-time. She is what I nicknamed the sweetheart of TCAS, everybody calls and wants to talk to Lisa specifically because she's very kind and compassionate and takes the time to really listen to what's going on and solve their problems. So, we are very, very lucky to have her employed and I just wanted to give her a shout out and make y'all aware that we have good things happening and other people across the state recognize the dedicated employees and the programs that we have. This week, Lisa will be traveling with me to Rowan County, they've asked for some of our assistance, looking at some of the programs we do here in Pitt County. So, I think it kind of helps our mission about being a leader in the east and across the state and I'm just very pleased and just wanted to recognize Lisa this morning.
Thank you both so much.
Okay, one other, one other item, we're pleased to announce that the Pitt County Development Commission is going to be sponsoring and holding a Thriving Small Town Summit for the municipalities in Pitt County. This will be held on Thursday, December the fifth, from nine until nine. This will be held on Thursday, December the fifth, from nine until noon. And this is gonna be described as a summit to show municipalities how they can increase their participation in economic development and enjoy more success in, um, their respective communities. They're gonna be having a, a person come in, um, from Downtown Strategies, Jennifer Gregory, who'll be conducting the workshop along with the Development Commission staff. And lunch will be included with this. We have a formal invitation that we, we'll be going out this week to invite the, um, well, actually going out to the mayors, the clerks, the managers, as well as the board of commissioners will be invited to attend that as well. So, and this will be held over at the, um, Biden Administration Building.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, uh, for that. Um, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
For you, okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the items for consent.
So move.
Second.
All right, let's vote, please. Tom, need to push again. Got it? Okay. Next, um, Brian, Hurricane Dorian, competition. Thank goodness it's not as much as in the past.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. Um, uh, I have before you a request to pay our overtime liabilities for work that was performed during Hurricane Dorian. Um, as the Chair just alluded to, the liability this year is just north of twenty-five, twenty-four thousand dollars, at twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fourteen. Um, as your policy, we have to come to you before we can actually make that payment. Uh, we were, um, I don't know if it's fortunate or unfortunate, but we did, uh, we did receive a declaration from FEMA that Pitt County has been declared, uh, one of the disaster counties. So, um, this twenty-four thousand, even though we're asking you to pay that, we will make every effort to, uh, be reimbursed, um, for the max amount.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, Scott, if you will talk about the Farmville Library Request.
Yes, I can ask, um, the Farmville Town Manager and Library Director to come forward to the podium while I introduce this. Back in the spring, when we were, um, composing the recommended budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty, the Farmville Library had asked for consideration for their ongoing yearly operating appropriation to the library, as well as they had put a request in the, um, budget for twenty-five thousand dollars toward their four-point-five million-dollar, um, library reconstruction. And we, um, had suggested and recommended they come back later in the year, once budget was adopted, and make that request outside of the, um, operating budget. So we have the Library Director here to, um, and this is David Miller with the Library and obviously Town Manager David Hodgins. So let's, y'all make your presentation and.
Well, thank you for allowing us to be here this morning. Um, as County Manager Elliot mentioned, that we did make a one-time special, non-recurring request at the beginning of this, uh, budget year for twenty-five thousand dollars. And, um, while it wasn't approved, we are here today hoping that funds might be available to help with our capital campaign at this time. While Farmville's Public Library is a municipal library, we really serve the entire county. Um, we, there are forty-six hundred citizens in Farmville. We have almost eight thousand library card holders, not to mention the folks who come to the library just for programs, who don't have library cards. So we really are a county-wide resource. We see our library as one of the most popular and essential resources in the county and we would like to see, uh, Pitt County show their support, uh, with this one-time, non-recurring, uh, contribution. And it'll also help with our continued momentum as we continue with our capital campaign.
Okay, any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. We'll vote, please. Okay, it's passed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, next, we, excuse me, have appointments and reappointments. Scott, if you'll.
Yes, next we have, after the appointments to the newly-formed or reconstituted, um, Pitt County Community Schools Recreation Advisory Council. Back in, um, February of this year, you passed a, a joint resolution with the, um, Pitt County Board of Education to more formalize this former advisory council into a, a true advisory council that has employment power of both, um, half the members from the Board of County Commissioners and half the members from the Pitt County, um, Board of Education. You have got six names before you, Brenda Hawkins, Shirley Morrison, Amy Haddam, Andrea Norris, Tony Parker, and Julian Lee would be the, um, Pitt County appointments. And then there will be six, um, corresponding names that would come from the, um, Pitt County Board of Education that they would then appoint. And again, this is an advisory council that would more formalize recommendations and matters coming from our, um, Community Schools Recreation Program.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, um, poor people have, our area has very little recreational opportunities. And we can't go to the schools because the grounds are locked up. Is there anyone on this that addresses those holes into recreation, uh, and, uh, relaxed play? I, I know Brenda Hawkins and I know Shirley Morrison from long ago. She was strong back bike a- advocate. Shirley is a very strong bike athlete, but I, I didn't recognize any of the others, so I couldn't determine.
Um, Amy Haddam is with our Public Health Department. Tony Parker is, um, has been involved in, um, recreational, recreational matters on the municipal level within Greenville. The, the purpose of the advisory council will be to more formalize recommendations to the Board of Education and to the County Commissioners, whether access to schools, whether additional recreational facilities, whether upgrading needs at the, at the district park, um, just the, the overall program to give them more of a, more solid voice in terms of these recommendations, whether policy or whether funding-related, come before this board.
Well, at least it comes before. I, 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 I don't have a complaint about that, but I know the further we have to drive for good play and good recreation is important when you don't have all the resources that you need to pay the bills and, and eat and sleep. So I certainly, uh, would like to offer to approve this motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, it passes. Thank you. And we have a reappointment?
Yes, next you have reappointments to the Pitt County Nursing Home Adult Care Committee, which has, I think, been renamed by the Mid East Commission, to the Joint Community Advisory Committee, which is actually representing the nursing home and adult care. You have two names for reappointment, Mr. Thompson Forbes and Ms. Josie Bowman.
Okay, yes.
Madam Chairman, uh, I noticed that there are several vacancies at the end of the line with it, with this. And we have a good person that I received and the information, let you know, I do read the information that comes in the packet. I'd like for us to appoint, uh, Kristy Davis to this board as well. She has background, if you got it in your paperwork there, and she do- does have experience with doing this. Her name is Kristy Davis and it came in your informational packet. So can we include that in there?
If, if I can add some, some light, just from on the board, as you recall, on this joint advisory committee, this was retooled or reframed by the, um, Mid East Commission or by the, the regulations. Instead of, um, it used to be that you could just appoint people who applied to the joint, um, Community Advisory Committee. They now actually have to go through the Mid East Commission, be trained, and it's like a twelve-month period. And then once they've complete, successfully completed their training, they then come back to you under a recommendation from the Mid East Commission to be appointed. So if this person is interested, I would suggest they.
She, she was in the packet and she has background and she served before.
We're, we're just showing everybody who's technically applied through you to this advisory committee, but they have not been vetted by the process that's been established.
Well, I serve on this board and, and I certainly have not met but once in, in, in my lifetime and I have, have not received a notice. So I'm in, on the board in name only and I'm not apprised, nor am I aware of what goes on. And I think this young lady will be very good on this board. And I think by eliminating and not, uh, uh, talking with me about it is a real insult.
Okay, do we need, I mean, I think what was, could you speak, Madam Attorney, to what is now required?
She has background, if you look at it, information. And she's been trained.
Okay.
Kimberly.
We can present it to the, um, ombudsman that she's completed the application, but she would need to, um, do the required training. And we can express that you have recommended her for appointment, but we would need, um, the ombudsman to reach out to her first and let her go through the proper training before we can actually appoint her. But we do have her application on file.
But do you know that there are several vacancies?
Correct.
Yes.
And they are aware of that as well.
But these are the only two that have completed the training, is that correct?
And this is a reappointment.
A reappointment of people who have already improved. It's not like a new one. So we don't have people who have completed the training available. So she needs to, you know, get that done.
From an application and training and vetting standpoint, this is probably one of our, our most stringent boards that you appoint people to, that, in terms of having people get on the committee.
Well, it doesn't meet.
And qualified.
It does not meet.
It meets here at our office in our conference room monthly.
I have not been notified and I'm on that board. It does not meet. If you don't notify me, it does not meet.
We'll, uh, we'll look into that, Commissioner Perkins-Williams, and see what the disconnect is.
Make sure she's included.
But you understand?
Yes, I do. And, uh, Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve the names presented. Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's vote, please. Okay, um, that's it for our regular agenda and we have a closed session. Madam Attorney?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen point one-one A three, under attorney-client privilege, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body and also under subsection A one, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information.
We have a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
We aren't ready to vote.
To go into closed session, we can vote.
Now we read.
Yes. Welcome back after our closed session. We have a motion, I think.
I would like to make a motion to approve the closed session minutes from October 14th.
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, we will entertain anything from the Commissioners, any comments, starting with Tom? Okay.
No comment.
I have a comment. I'd like to say to the residents that our office is still closed because we are doing some cosmetic work. All the 300 phone calls and all of you who's been calling about emergency food, we did not shop before that, not only because of my health issues, but also because we were going to do this planning. Be patient with us. We will reopen very soon, and we will go out and do the shopping for the emergency food bank. I'm still working with you. I'm still willing to serve. And I want to say I apologize for your inconvenience, and I have cleared out the 300 calls and the telephone at Northern Pitt County. And I thank you so much for all your prayers, concern, and interest.
Okay.
Vote, vote, vote.
Okay, Anne, Mike.
I would just like to say that the Collar Festival in Aiden that was canceled due to the hurricane has been rescheduled this weekend, so if anybody gets a chance, go out there and see what they have.
Great, thank you for that. I had forgotten that. Okay, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second? We had two motions, so we'll take one as a second. All in favor? Let's vote?
Yes.
And thank you very much.